Order for Thursday, May 4th, 2023, Warren County Council. If you all please rise for a moment of silence and then the pledge. Thank you. And Brad, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, we'll have to have roll call votes. Rick Reed is on video, remote. Can make it legal, everyone's able to see he's present. Let's see if I can set this up on the calendar here. We'll try to set this up so you can see and hear. Okay, roll call, please.
Ron Bacon.
Here.
Rob Demmett.
Here.
Ted Metzger.
Present.
Brad Overton.
Here.
Richard Reed. Greg Richmond.
Here.
Chris Wetstone.
Here.
All right, we have a public hearing on the public service local income tax to amend an ordinance for correctional facility. We've all been up to date on everything that's going on with that. And they're trying to start getting some things done. And we need to get the financing in line so they can get things done. That's the importance of us looking at this. And we have an ordinance before us. And what number would that be? That's our first one, okay. And you've got it in front of you. Do I need to read anything right now?
Just the title.
Okay. This is an ordinance of the County Council of Warren County, Indiana, modifying the local income tax rates. It does not change the amount of money being collected from everybody's paycheck. That all remains the same. So it won't affect the taxpayer. This is a public hearing. Would anybody like to speak? Come up and identify yourself, please.
Hi, everybody. I am Kristi Powell. I'm the town manager for the town of Newburgh. I'm not very prepared this evening. I just found out that this ordinance was being introduced. Obviously, the town of Newburgh has a little bit of concern about the reduction in the share of money that the cities and towns will see if this goes through. I will tell you, what it has done for the last two years for our town has been transformational. Before the public safety lit, we were operating our police and fire entirely off of our edit, which, as we know, edit is for economic development. We were unsuccessful with our annexation. We're feeling like we're unable to grow and be able to provide the services at a same level as we have in the past. With this public safety money, the past two years, we have financed a $900,000 fire truck that comes to us in two and a half years, and we will have to start paying that debt service at that time. We have added a police car. We are talking about in SRO, we're actually in the works right now of adding a school resource officer to two of our schools, the two schools in Newburgh, St. John's and Newburgh Elementary. We are building a training facility for our fire department. And our fire department is also in need of additional equipment. Our air packs are expiring this year. So I just want to let you know that I was looking at some numbers. I know this is all just being talked about and reviewed. A $65,000 decrease in our public safety lit would be detrimental to what we're doing. And I have concerns about it decreasing even more over time. So I want to thank you for the initial receiving of that money. Again, it has been amazing to us. We've been able to do several things that we laid out in our public safety plan. And we'd like to continue to work through that. And that's all I have to say. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
I just want to say that the decrease estimate was calculated on the same amount of money expected in 2024 as in 2023. And you know those numbers will increase. So that decrease will most likely not be that high. These are just estimates, so.
Set this page right.
Yeah.
So from 472 to 425, is that the numbers I'm looking at correct?
I don't think so.
I think that's about, it's less than 50,000.
Yeah.
And this is based on knowing what we know now for this year? And don't know what next year is going to bring.
Correct.
These are projected.
It will increase.
Okay. This is that Senate bill though, isn't it? Seventy-eight?
Yes, but that's if that passes, yes.
But that did not.
And it did not pass.
My understanding is it did not pass. No, it did not pass. So. So nothing really changes.
Open discussion.
Open for discussion, yeah.
Yeah, so the Senate Bill 78 that didn't pass, my understanding, though, it could come up again next year or every year or every year forever, kind of thing.
It can happen at any time.
Which is why we did this, was to try to protect the money for the jail. The whole point of this, I guess, protect as much as we can. I personally, guys, I don't like seeing reduction to the towns. However, I do see benefit in the towns contributing to the payment of the jail. You know, I think that the arrests made in the towns will be taken to the jail. And the detectives in the towns and the police officers will use the jail facilities, I'm sure. So I see good reason for the towns to contribute to the payment of the jail. I'll ask, is there, what happens tonight if we vote on this and then we vote again? Is that right, if it's a unanimous vote?
If it's unanimous.
And is there any harm in doing it in two votes? Voting this month and next month to give anyone else a chance that, you know, wants to speak or anything like that? Just looking for thoughts here, guys.
Perhaps Commissioner Philippi could answer that. If you want to, if this were delayed a month, how's that going to set back the jail? I mean, we could pass it unanimously if everybody votes for it tonight. The concern is, as he said before, that if the Senate Bill 78 had passed, we would not be able to make payments on the jail. And it's put off for who knows when.
The Sheriff's Office and Security Project is moving pretty slow. We're still working on a piece of land. We're still negotiating contract with the architect. We're still negotiating contract with the construction manager. So I don't think a couple of extra weeks or even a month possibly would hurt. I'm not sure what timeframe you're discussing, but.
I guess it would be the next council meeting, right? And then would it be the next?
If it's not unanimous tonight and if you get a majority vote here, what is the majority vote tonight? Four?
We have four, we have six, so we have four.
Okay.
And we did publish that if it was not tonight, it would be at next month's meeting.
And this would be the public hearing that's required.
So you're talking on an additional month?
We, since the Senate Bill 78 didn't pass, if it doesn't pass unanimously tonight, it would be considered at our next meeting. It would be asked to come up again and we would vote on it then, yea or nay. And I was under the impression that we needed to move this pretty quickly because of, I was told that the jail committee and people involved with the jail were really waiting on to make sure funding was there. So if we don't need this tonight, then we'll discuss it, we'll take a vote on it.
I believe everything that we, the jail committee, have, and I'm just kind of speaking my mindset right now, not really for anyone else. But I stood here when you guys told us to move ahead with the 57.7 figure for the total project, cost of the constructions, 50 million. We know what that payment is that you want. Everything that we're doing right now is based around that. There's still a lot of work to go on the things that I just mentioned, on the financing thereof. So I don't know that we were expecting anything. I think we have what we need at this time.
Yeah, he has what he needs because we have said we would make that payment. But right now, we don't have the money put back to make the payment. And this would set that in place.
There was a $696, $100,000 bill that is in the works here. Do we have money to pay that?
Yes.
And I don't even really have a handle on when that first payment would be made.
Did they have a meeting Tuesday? I didn't get notice of it. So I've tried to be in on all these.
You know, some of the initial expenses that I think we'll see would be the cost of the land, the initial preliminary design contract for the architect. Not thinking of anything else, those will be the initial payments.
Well, Terry, if this gets approved tonight versus final approval was, say, in a month, what difference will it make to you guys in the jail committee, if any?
I can't think of any time.
That won't make any difference at all?
Correct.
And the urgency really was that Senate Bill 78 we thought was going to pass. So.
But we still, in my opinion, and what we've been talking about, we still need the money that we are going to pass in order to make the payment. So even, nothing's going to change what our needs are going to be.
If it doesn't pass in this new form, then we're not going to be able to make payments.
Correct. That's what I'm saying. So waiting, I mean, it doesn't matter, our discussion with whoever, what we're waiting for, that's not going to change what our needs are going to be.
But let me say something about that. And I'm just, I want all cards to be on the table. You guys have discussed a $4 million payment. We have some numbers that we've been given by financial advisors that are probably averaging about 4.2. So I think what you're talking about is a $4.2 million payment. That payment could go up or down based on the term or the rate. You know, my preference in long-term savings is to have the lowest rate possible and the shortest term possible. You know, that's for us all collectively to decide. But I don't think there's a set number at this point in time on exactly what that payment is going to be. We know what you want it to be. So far, the discussions have said $4 million.
So just so we're clear, right now, we're putting back $2 million a year. When we pass this, we'll be putting back about 4.2 million based on estimates a year. We're not putting enough back to make a $4 million payment. That's why I feel like this needs to.
And we're still going to be in the ballpark of 4 million, even if it could be a little less. Could be a little more, depending on that. But what we're doing now is not going to be near enough to make the payment. We know that.
If we pause this a month, what's that going to gain us?
That's.
I mean, that's just the bottom line.
That's a fair question. Can you think of anything that we would gain if we?
Well, I don't know. I think something that we can gain is a common understanding of what the financing looks like because that was presented to us. But I don't know that we've discussed it with you guys. I know Crystal and I have discussed it.
Terry and I discussed it. And I told him I felt comfortable with where they were as long as this passed. So if you don't pass this, then they need to go back to the drawing board.
Okay, yeah, I get the need for passing it. I think there's a real strong need for that. I'm just looking at today versus a month from now, what would the difference be? For example, I understand that interest rates may change. Expected to go up, I do believe. And would that have a negative impact on waiting a month if interest rates change? Or would it have a positive impact?
I don't know, we're not ready to issue that bond.
I mean, I'm looking for a nuts and bolts kind of answer.
I thought the way he was explaining it, it was like on a floating scale.
Is it on it, is it?
Yeah, it's going to be on a floating scale. So if it's better, so if there's more, I mean, it's going to fluctuate somewhat. That's the way I, you know, understood it when he explained it a few meetings ago.
I'll tell you one thing, just, I'm not sure why, I mean, you guys are the fiduciary board of the county. And I'm not really entirely sure why the commissioners have been tasked with, you know, handling everything bond related. I would prefer input from you guys on the term, at least. There's not much we can all do about the rates. The rates are the rates. We can try to achieve via the backing, the best rate possible. But the term is what I think we need to look at together.
If it's passed the way that we are proposing tonight, 20 years is the maximum. You can't go further than 20 years, from what I understand.
Oh, on approving this, I think you're right.
That's correct.
Yeah, I think it's 20, I don't know if it's an odd number, but it's around 20. I'll look at it right now.
Okay.
I think that's, I think I remember reading that too.
I know it was a different, it was a lot shorter term. Because we were going to go 24 originally.
Which would make it even more important to have the lower interest rate if?
Yeah, I'm not sure what you're referencing there, Greg. But two of the studies that we were handed, one of them was on 22 years.
Was what?
One was on 22 years.
Okay, well, one was 24, and I think one was on 22.
Well, I think, Terry, you're talking about the repayment of the loan.
Twenty-two?
It's 22, okay.
Okay.
That answers that.
That this rate can be in effect.
Yeah, this point three and point two would be for 22 years.
Well, at least the point two would be for 22 years. For the correctional facility.
I'm not sure I understand what you guys just talked about.
They're saying, they're saying, Terry, that if they pass this and they put the correctional facility at point two zero, that can only remain at point two zero for 22 years.
Got it.
Okay, so let's say you end up doing a term of 24 years. We're really only putting money aside for 20 years, or 22 years, I'm sorry, 22 years.
Okay.
Okay, so we would, we probably want that term to be 22 or less. Just a thought.
So you're talking about the term of the structure of the public safety local option income tax structure?
Yeah, I'm at the structure, but yeah, the imposition of the tax can only be for 22 years for whatever they pass tonight.
Got it, okay.
Your term of your bond can be.
Related to what I was talking about.
Yes.
Well, it's the payment for what you're talking about. So, yeah, the term of the bond, that's completely separate.
Yes.
And after 22 years, that 20 hundreds goes away, correct? And all you're left is 30?
It just says the tax rate may not be in effect for more than 22 years. So I honestly don't know if that means in 22 years, you can reintroduce a point two or a point one or a?
Or you could amend it to go back to the way it is right now.
You can definitely do that, yeah. I mean, the way I read this, there is no, you can absolutely make it zero and put the point two elsewhere or eradicate the point two. But I don't know if you can re-adopt the, this particular tax rate beyond 22 years. So I can answer that question in 21 years, I guarantee you.
We'll ask you.
Hopefully not, but we'll see.
So I'm not sure if I was helpful or I just added more confusion there. Anything else, right?
Can you, just a question, so for you, you don't think it makes any difference we go tonight or tomorrow or next month?
I can't think of anything. Sometimes I wish we were moving a little quicker.
I don't know how raising the Fed rate 25 basis points makes any difference.
That's a big concern, I think a very big.
He gave us a range when we, in one of my meetings, I don't remember if it was before us, but he gave us a range of what it could go to. The person who does the financial side of it.
Yep.
And it seemed like it was like 4.25 to 4.75, somewhere in that range is what they were kind of looking at. So I don't know what it's going to be.
Brad, you're quiet, you usually have a lot to say.
Don't have much to. I mean, if they bump up the rate, I mean, the last one was a quarter. If they bump it up to a half the next time, bump it up three quarters, I mean, we don't know. I mean, we don't have any choice.
Yeah, I mean, we don't, I mean, the longer, the longer that, you're kind of waiting to see what the Fed does. I mean, the more time you wait, I mean, nothing's going to go down right now. The worst, the best they could do is hold, they're going to hold steady. They're not going to drop anything right there. I mean, from everything you hear.
Everything I've heard is it's going to continue
Yep.
to raise it up until they get what they want.
So just so you know, I don't know that it's relevant to the conversation that you're having right now, but it is relevant to the entire big picture. One thing that we will fight for in the language of legal bond is to have the shortest period possible written into that where we can, say, six, seven, eight years down the road, say, okay, rates are lower, we're going to refinance that bond.
I think the way they were going to make that in the structure, they talked about five years. We'll write that in the structure of the bond itself. After five years, we can refinance.
I'm not sure what that, what that period of time is going to be, but we'll try to get it as low as we can.
Think of five years before they decide to lower it.
Things are going down.
Yeah, 36, 24 months to raise it.
If we default, then you're writing a whole different story, for sure. I'm looking for a motion.
Motion to approve.
I'll second. I'm sorry, first, let's close the public.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Unless somebody else wants to speak, sorry.
Hi, Chad Bennett, Ohio Township trustee. I did have a question on the sheet that I was given on township numbers. The category, if the Senate bill did not pass the point three, none of the figures, none of the columns have figures in them for all of the townships. But there was a figure column for if the Senate bill did pass.
Right, it's just, I didn't add those over to that. I mean, you're going to have to, since it didn't pass, you guys are going to have to come again and request.
Right.
They're going to have to look at those requests and decide what they're going to get.
I just wanted to make sure that there were still going to be funding available for township requests because according to the column I'm looking at, they're all blank. So I didn't know if all of that funds is being allocated to somewhere else or how that was going to go.
I took that to mean that the amount is up to the council at that time. The way I tried to mean, it could be zero.
As it has been currently.
It could be any amount, you know.
But are there dollars available for any of that to even finagle once you put the 4.2 or whatever?
I can tell you right now, it depends on if they pass this. If they don't pass this, my feeling is there won't be dollars available.
But you don't know what those dollar numbers are?
No, no. And again, you have to come and request.
Oh, absolutely, yes.
You know, last year, I think they based it on population, you know. They, I can't speak for them, they may do something similar or they may just take requests. I can't answer that.
Right. Well, and to kind of echo like what Kristi said, you know, what we're doing with our dollars, you know, we're in the process of hiring full-time firefighters with our public safety lit dollars. So this is something that's very important with the growth that we've got going on in Ohio Township and the struggle that we have with our volunteers to be able to make, you know, six, seven, eight hundred runs a year as a volunteer. So we are using those funds, you know, in a wise way and moving forward with this. So, you know, obviously, we'll be, you know, making our request again this year for 2024. But just wanted to make sure that there's going to be dollars available for all the townships to be able to do stuff. You know, I think it's a good idea that we're using this money to be able to make the payment on that jail. I mean, I think that's a fiscally responsible thing. But, you know, we also want to make sure that we still allow funding for all the avenues of public safety that are happening in the township or the whole entire county from townships to, you know, top to bottom, left to right, so to speak. So, thank you.
Yeah, I don't think it's our intention to take away using that 30 hundreds of percent.
Right, and I didn't believe so either, but I just, with those columns being blank, that's what I didn't know. The column next to it showed figures and then, so I wasn't sure if it was, the column figures would move over, if it was the column figures that were currently in there.
Is that because we would be required?
It's because you have to determine what that's going to be. Right now, it isn't anything.
Right.
If it passed, we would have had to pay those amounts.
Right, right.
Okay, all right.
Now, with that said, I want to make sure you guys understood that. If you don't pass this, the new, the amended form, and we're automatically putting money back for that jail payment, I got to find it somewhere. And it probably, there isn't going to be as much money available to you guys coming for requests than there would be if we just get this taken care of.
Right, well, if you're putting 2 million aside now and you're going to put 4.2, that extra 2.2 is coming from somewhere, so.
Exactly, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anybody else from the public before we have this motion? I have a motion by Brad to close the public hearing. Is there a second on that? Is to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
Okay, second by Ron. Okay, any discussion? All those in favor of closing the public hearing?
I got a.
We have to do a roll call.
Ron Bacon.
Aye.
Rob Demmett.
Yes.
Ted Metzger.
Aye.
Brad Overton.
Aye.
Richard Reed.
Aye.
Greg Richmond.
Yes.
Chris Wetstone.
Yes.
Okay, now I'll take a motion for the amended ordinance.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Brad to approve and second by Ron.
Roll call, Ron Bacon.
Aye.
Rob Demmett.
Aye.
Ted Metzger.
Aye.
Brad Overton.
Aye.
Greg Richmond.
Yes, and I was told Rick can't vote because he's on this tax issue, Rick.
Right, and Chris Wetstone.
Before I vote, I do want to say that I feel the need to explain that because District One is well represented here through the town manager and the trustee, that I see more harm for District One in waiting with the possibility of interest rates going up. And since the commissioner really didn't think it was going to, you know, matter, he didn't really have it one way or another, I had to go with that, that I see more harm in waiting. So yes, I vote yes.
So.
Ted, did Ted vote?
Yeah.
Okay. So that is six to zero to one abstention, right?
Yes.
Six to zero, one abstention be Rick because he's on remote.
That's correct.
Okay.
So can they vote again then?
That was the vote to pass that.
Yes, it was.
Yeah, so because it was unanimous of all the members present at the meeting.
So they don't have to read it again?
No, then it has been passed and done.
So that would be the correctional or rehabilitation facilities, 20 hundreds of percent, and then 30 hundreds of percent going to public safety like it is right now. Of that, half a percent that we pass. No increase in taxes for anybody. Moving on, no tabled items, new business. Minutes, the minutes, you got the corrections sent out to you, there were just a few.
Motion to approve the amendments?
Motion by Ted. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ron, was it?
Yep.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor? You can vote on this one, Rick, but we got a call. Roll call.
Ron Bacon.
Aye.
Rob Demmett.
Aye.
Ted Metzger.
Aye.
Brad Overton. Richard Reed. Greg Richmond.
Aye.
Chris Wetstone.
Yes.
That vote was seven, zero.
Yes.
All right. Item number 3A, Health Department Business, Additional Appropriation, Part-Time Pound Keeper, Two Item number three A, Health Department Business, additional appropriation, part-time pound keeper, two thousand eight hundred dollars. Overtime Animal Control, five thousand dollars. And then there is a transfer from Animal Control EXP?
Expense.
Expense, okay. And then that's four thousand one hundred and seven dollars to part-time Animal Control, four thousand one hundred and seven dollars. Identify yourself.
Yeah, Aaron Franz, Director of Warwick County Health Department.
Do you wish to speak to this one?
I think he's just really wants to speak to the overtime Animal Control, maybe explain that situation.
And we have a salary ordinance of five thousand dollars that can go in that also. You wanna tell us about your part-time situation?
Uh, well, right now with our, it's really just hard to maintain. So we're actually trying to keep as many people as we can, and so we're taking some of the, the money that's there currently that we bring in and transferring it to our part-time, just to try to help keep some extra hands out there. That's what we're doing with the transfer. Economically, as the country, so obviously as the county, and people don't always take into consideration proper care for their pets. And so we have a lot of activity right now that we haven't even seen in the last several years, a lot less, obviously a lot less bay and neutering, a lot less, people taking care like they should when people don't have the money, a lot more abandonments. Cats are always a problem, but now they're even more so. It's actually started a couple of months ago. Used to, used to be seasonal, you know, with the changing of the seasons, it's not anymore. Just have an influx of, you know, so many cats a day, and we may go another day, and then we have a hoarding case and we'll take in thirty. So it's, it's, there's no rhyme or reason to it really that we can see, other than that. A lot of people just don't have the money to do stuff. We try to do as much as we can to help them, but obviously, you know, we're limited on that. We have other stuff to do as well, so.
Are your full-time people on call on the weekend?
Yes.
Okay. And how would the part-time help in that?
Well, depending on what they do, we have some that just try to keep the kennel clean. We have some that can do certain runs for us. Some of our animals that we come in, we have, one of our part-time employees is a retired veterinarian. He has maintained his license. And so if we have animals that we have to help take care of because they're under quarantine, they've bitten, or they're in some sort of issue that we have in court, somebody has to check them, make sure they have their medicine. Just, so we, there's a lot of different levels, answering the phones, checking the messages, those kind of things. They do as much as they can.
Anybody have any questions for him and the council?
Is this three A coming from County General?
No, his Health Department phone.
If we do a motion, you can do a motion to three A, B, and C. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
I'll make a motion to approve three A, B, and C. Motion by Ron, is there a second?
I'll second.
Rod, second it.
Roll call, Ron Bacon?
Aye.
Rob Demmett?
Aye.
Ted Metzger?
Aye.
Brad Overton?
Aye.
Richard Reed?
Aye.
Greg Richmond?
Aye.
Chris Wetstein?
Aye.
Seven, zero. Thank you.
Thank you. Would also like to get some, a little guidance, if I may. I've, Crystal's passed out some, a, uh, O'Brien Transport. We're trying to make some room out there. Some, some of you came out and seen our current situation. And one of the suggestions was made that we look into getting a, a ground box, a trailer, basically, to, to use for storage. And I went out there and visited because they said you come out and you pick if there's what, whatever we have. They have a forty-foot trailer for seventy-five hundred dollars. It's brand new. They'll deliver it for free. You see, the twenty-footers are fifty-four hundred a piece, saying they'll deliver them for free. However, this forty-footer has doors on both sides. It's really, really nice. There's not a big difference in cost in the used ones. The thing that's the downside to the used ones is you get what they have. You don't get to pick necessarily. It's whatever they decide to give you. And some of the ones I looked at yesterday would take a lot of extra work.
And no warranty.
And no warranty, yeah, exactly. This would be nice because we could put a wall in between, because I know one of you mentioned, you know, using part of this for, temperature control, so we can store food, and the other side just ran, random storage. To have the, the doors on both sides would be really beneficial for that. So I just wanted to see what, because we'd like to get that rolling as quick as possible.
When you said doors on both sides, like on both sides of the trailer or just on both ends or what?
On both ends of the trailer, so there'd be two entry points. I'd like to set it where the smaller yard barn is that we've redone for that cat area over on that side, and then have entrances on both sides, yes.
I'm dispersing a semi-trailer place in another county, and they still have several trailers, which we've already sold a few of them for them. But I don't have a, doors on each end, so.
Okay.
But I will do some checking. I mean, is there anybody else in the neighborhood that we can check with?
Well, I contacted, I contacted my brother, his trucking company, and he said the problem with some of the regular trailers is they're not reinforced, because they're, you know, they're using, they want as little weight as possible for traveling. And so these are, these that they have are the, you know, they have the beams all the way down the side. He said that's one of the things we have to look for. He did say that the price is pretty, actually very reasonable compared to what they're paying for, for trailers right now, so.
Absolutely.
But he said the reinforcement part was the big issue, when hits it wrong.
So new seventy-five hundred is what you're saying?
Uh, yes.
So, Aaron, just to be clear, when I advertise this for June, you need an advertisement for seventy-five hundred? Or just?
Well, yeah, that's what I would, I think that's the better, better than the ten thousand eight.
Right, for two, yes.
Staying in this trailer's already, the floor's great, and ventilation's, got more ventilation than the standard, the used ones. They only have two on either side. This one's got ventilation all the way down. So there's a lot of benefits to it. And it's a foot taller. That means, I guess, I can stack stuff higher, but.
Less likely to blow over.
Yes.
Have you given thought, you've talked to simple things like electricity in it, I mean?
Yes, we, we would like to do that to one end. Actually, the, uh, the lady that showed me around down there at the transport said that she deals with Libs Candy, and they use some, she said a robot AC unit, rather than wiring and doing that. She said that it takes, it's a lot less money and a lot easier to do. And I'm, oh, I'm gonna look into that. I'm gonna get ahold of Mike and see what, you know, see what they're talking about. But, but the electric, we have thought about that already as well, since we've.
Besides, just wondering if you, that you're probably gonna need more than the cost of the unit, right? Or do you have the money for that?
I, I, you know, right now with this money that you see that we, that we transferred, as that comes in, I can do things like that. I just don't have that to do the whole.
That's, that's where I was going with that.
So are we all in agreement just to advertise for the seventy-five hundred for the June meeting? Does that sound, okay? Okay?
Thank you all very much.
There's a seminar, Aaron, coming up that they're gonna have online that I read something about concerning the bill that the House, General Assembly passed. Are you up on all of that stuff?
We're trying to. Commissioner Philippi and I are trying to stay up on that as much as we can. I did speak to Crystal today. We've been working with several, several different groups, trying to stay on top of it. I know our last meeting, Heather and I were in, were a video conference. And I know they were, the numbers weren't quite settled. They were still cutting a lot of things and changing a lot of things, so I wanna get those final numbers. But we, we do need to get together after that, once we know where we're going, for sure.
After that seminar?
Well, after the, once the, the numbers are finalized, as to how much they're giving to each county. But we are, we have, we would like to opt in, and that's a, I think the commissioners have to make that choice. There was a lot of things we wanted to make sure of first. I know Mr. Bacon contacted me and, uh, earlier, much earlier, and there were a lot of concerns that I had about it, and they've really addressed a lot of those. We, we believed that they were gonna take a lot of authority away from the local departments and keep it at the state level, and that the state wanted to be the face of local health. We weren't, definitely not too excited about that. And so a lot of other things that we're gonna be dependent, a lot of the money that we receive now by grants, we're then gonna be dependent on what our cooperation was or wasn't. And so what this will do is do away with a lot of our, the local health maintenance, from what I understand, will be gone. And it'll be supplemented this way with the money that comes in. However, you know, how long that's gonna last, I, I don't know. It's a lot, it's a lot of money that they're putting in there, so. And it's primarily population-based, and then also what our department says, once the commissioners agree to participate, then we have to tell them what we're going to do that we're not doing already. So they have a list of things that they want, services that they want us to offer. And we have, we've had a couple of meetings about that. I've discussed it with the Board of Health, and we'll, we'll just have to start making decisions, because some of the things obviously may not be practical in Warwick County, and so we'll have to evaluate that, see if it's a need or not. And then the other things, if they're just gonna demand it, then we'll have to find some way to put that into, put that into practice here. And there's, and there's a lot of stuff that they're asking us to do. A lot of it we do already, and we were trying, you know, but they're changing the rules on lead testing. They've lowered the rate, the numbers. They want us to increase that. Obviously, a lot of STD work, they want us to be more involved in. There was a STD outbreak in Vanderburg County this last year, a pretty good-sized one. Most, for us, most everybody in Warwick County weren't able to go to Vanderburg, but they're wanting us to institute some more of that. They're wanting us to look at having a clinician either available or on staff. And so a lot of new, new things too, coming up that they would like for us to have, to offer more services. But, you know, Warwick County is unique, and it's not only in its size, but in its diversity as well. The range of what people want and what they're willing to do from Newburgh to Selvin, very different. And what people's participation levels will be, we found that with COVID. You know, well, we'll find if you're coming to our house, but we're not coming to you. You know, you have a lot of that. And so we'll have to be able to weigh out those demographics and see what people wanna participate in and how, too. So I think we'll probably wind up doing a few community forums at some point as well in the process. So that's definitely something we'll all need to come together on to discuss.
I'm hoping that that call, that it's a Zoom or go-to-meeting or something like that, will have a little bit of information on that.
Yeah, I hope so.
You're all invited, by the way. You all got that email. Okay, thank you. Can I ask a question about an unrelated topic?
Yes, you may.
July fifth, I get emails and I get calls from people that have lost dogs, you know, on their hands, and they tell me they just cannot get ahold of anybody at Animal Control. Is there, is there gonna be a comprehensive plan or a flyer or something we can put out to people, let them know what they need to do? Because I know you guys can't go around and collect all, all the stray dogs on the July fifth.
Right, yeah.
I mean, there's gotta be hundreds of them.
I'll, I'll work on that. I'll, I'll get something together to get a, get a response to you. Mr. Metzger, I mean, that's a, that's a very good question.
Average life, yeah. They seem to call me and email me because they can't get ahold of this.
Maybe, maybe we could take up a thing for those special vests, just don't eat those, because that seems to be a big thing right now for dogs, to help keep them calm.
But, but it is. Reuniting the dogs with their owners.
It is, and we, we're really, we have a really good program that we use, and then we, we, we post a lot of our stuff with that. And everything we have, we, they, they try to post that on Facebook as well to try to do that. I have found recently, a lot of the public, they're very similar to my children when they make a phone call. If you don't answer, they're not gonna leave a message. They'll call you ten more times because for whatever reason, they didn't, they thought you must have not heard it the first time. But they won't leave any information for us, and they'll call us multiple times, and they're like, so we'll, I'll, I'll definitely bring that up to see what we can, what we can work out.
At least some type of guidance to give them here.
What day is it? July four, or July fourth on this year?
Tuesday.
Tuesday? Yeah, we'll be there. We'll be there Wednesday, yeah.
This one happens to fall on a weekday, but before, was it Saturday?
Yeah. But yeah, we'll, we'll definitely.
That is a problem.
Yeah, oh yeah, absolutely. It is. There's people taking their pets everywhere, so I think it's probably more so a problem now, if they're going to these shows and they're taking off and a group of people, you can't find them, so. Absolutely.
I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Next up is Circuit Court Business, number four, additional appropriation, adult probation. Circuit Court Probation, two thousand five hundred dollars, additional appropriation.
Okay, Judge Granger could not make it tonight. He let me know. But basically, this is just bookkeeping or housekeeping. They had the adult chief probation officer retired, okay, and they have promoted one of the ladies to chief, and this is the compensation for chief, but it wasn't in the line item, because it's a new person. We used all of the other line item in the other chief's payout, so we do need the appropriation, so, yes.
Motion to approve. I have a motion by Brad. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Rob.
Roll call, Ron Bacon?
Aye.
Rob Demmett?
Aye.
Ted Metzger?
Aye.
Brad Overton?
Aye.
Richard Reed?
Aye.
Greg Richmond?
Aye.
Chris Wetstein?
Aye.
So that one is seven to zero. And then, next up is Handbook Policy Reimbursement Transfers or Corrections. All items listed have been checked for accuracy and can be voted on under one motion. Salary ordinance for sheriff payout. It's a handbook item. Deputy one hundred and twelve sick, eighty vacation, thirteen and a quarter comp hours, five thousand one hundred and thirty-five dollars and thirty-six cents. And five B, salary ordinance additional. The first one just salary ordinance only. This is salary ordinance and additional, I assume?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Prosecutor retiree payout, according to Handbook, first deputy criminal division, one hundred sixty hours PTO, six thousand nine hundred and eighty-six dollars and forty cents. And so the additional appropriation would be six thousand nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Motion to approve. Motion by Brad, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Ted.
Roll call, Ron Bacon?
Aye.
Rob Demmett?
Aye.
Ted Metzger?
Aye.
Brad Overton?
Aye.
Richard Reed?
Aye.
Greg Richmond?
Aye.
Chris Wetstein?
Aye.
Vote is seven to zero. And under council business, before I ask for anything else from the public, we have a report on tourism.
Good evening. My name is Sherri Sherman. I'm the Executive Director of the Warwick County Chamber of Commerce, a board member of the tourism, and also the administrator with a memo U with the board to do the administrative for the visit Warwick. We have a nine-member board, and income from tourism has continued to grow since it became effective in two thousand eighteen. We're actually at seven hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars that has been brought in from the innkeeper's tax over the last several years. And trust me, we are spending that as much as we can. So it can only by code be used to promote tourism in Warwick County, to bring people into the county, and we're working on that as much as we can. We did, and I'm gonna kind of go back a little bit, because there's some new faces here that were not here when we implemented this. We went back and in two thousand eight, or two thousand and twenty, we actually started doing a strategic plan, looking at how we could best utilize the money. And actually, we brought someone in with a new perspective and could give us, you know, what is the best thing about Warwick County, and what, what can we do, and how can we best showcase that? And it kept coming up with outdoor activities and all the things that we can do. One of the things also that was noted that we wanted to identify the I sixty-four corridor to promote tourism opportunities, to get people off of the interstate, of Interstate sixty-four, and get them into Warwick County. And so we have to, we're working on that. We've done a number of billboards along I sixty-four to get people off the interstate, and we also have some future plans. Right now, we are working with NDOT's signage contractor to do wayfinding signs. People don't know what we have here. We wanna get them off the, the interstates. And we have targeted the I sixty-nine covert avenue northbound and southbound to get them off, to look at historic Newburgh. Originally, we wanted to do the three museums, but the contractor has a requirement that you have to be open six days a week in order to be able to put a sign up, so. in order to be able to put a sign up, so we could not do the Newburgh Museum, nor could we do the Warwick County Museum. So what we're doing is getting them off to downtown Historic Newburgh and downtown Boonville Square, and then from there, they can get to the museums. But we are able to do the Coal Mine Museum and get them off the interstate to go to the Coal Mine Museum. And that's something that the museum up there has been working on for years. Those signs are not cheap, and just to do them, and we want to do northbound, and, or east and west, and north and south, to get them off each sign that you see, and there's two in each direction, because you have about two miles out, and then you have the directional, and then for every turn that you have to make, they're five hundred dollars, just to build the sign. And then there's a rent for the sign, so they are not, not cheap, and that's why the Coal Mine Museum has never been able to do that. But we are able to do that, so we are targeting the Linville Exit, and that will have Boonville Square, Linville Park, Scales Lake Park, with directional signs on how to get there, and the Coal Mine Museum. So, those are in the works now, we have got, some of them have been approved, and we're hoping to get those up in a short time, and that. So, that's kind of where we're looking at. We've also committed to doing advertising and marketing. We created a grant program, and over the past three years, four years, we just gave out, we've had sixty-four thousand dollars have been given out, but the other night, we just gave, or yesterday morning, we gave out another two thousand three hundred. So, about sixty-five thousand dollars has gone out to various events and things like that. Some of the organizations, twenty-two of them to be exact, twenty-three, excuse me, we've got another one yesterday, we've given out money to those individuals to promote. Many of them use them to buy billboards outside of the county, because that's what we want to do. We, we'd love to promote inside, but we know that the people inside, we want to get the people outs, from outside the county to come here and to spend their money. And we talked with one of them that did receive money last year, and they said they put the billboards in Henderson and Owensboro, and they actually could target their, could actually report that they had more people coming in, because they asked for zip codes when they register, so they could actually track how many people are coming, and that, and then we encourage them to, to spend. So, it has been an opportunity to really promote, and that, and I think things are moving forward. We continue to get interest in people wanting to come here, and I think as, as we get more hotels, we'll have even bigger and better things to do. Right now, we have about one halftime person that is targeted just for doing tourism, so. We're moving along, and we continue to spend every dollar that we can get to get out there and to promote Warwick County. And people are starting to notice that. All the billboards that we sponsor have to have the Visit Warwick logo on them, so anytime you see one of those, and that, if it's a billboard and it has the logo on it, tourism dollars have paid for that. So, we want to make sure that Warwick, Visit Warwick gets, gets the recognition for that. So, any questions? And if you want to know how much every month it is there, you can go to the Indiana Department of Revenue, and they actually have a page on there that you can go back and see how much money comes in each month for, for tourism. So, depending upon the month and the time of year, it can vary, so. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have before me invoiced Baker Tilly from RQAW, and the six hundred sixty-six thousand one hundred twenty-one dollars and thirty-three cents as an additional appropriation request. Is this gonna be in the next meeting?
Yeah, it's for next, yeah.
I'll set this aside for next meeting then. Any from the public sign-in sheet?
No.
Okay. And I'd like to mention, coming up Wednesday, May seventeen, four-thirty our time, the Southwest Indiana AIC District Meetings in Huntingburg, I'm signed up and registered for that. And then, if you want to put in your calendars, the Indiana County Council State Called Meeting, that's one where it's all county councils only, there have been some auditors that'll go along occasionally, because stuff we talk about is council and auditor business. That is June twenty-three and twenty-four, Friday the twenty-third is an evening, probably starts around six o'clock, and then the twenty-fourth is pretty much an all-day, they'll have breakfast there, it's an all-day meeting, breakfast and lunch, be leaving about three or four, and it's going to be in Carmel, Indiana. So, June twenty-three and twenty-four, and then May seventeen. Anybody else have something to come before the council? Seeing none, I'll look for a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Ted to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Rob.
Rob. Yeah, you bet, thanks.
All those in favor? A call, roll call vote.
No.
No, okay. He said aye. Seven, zero, thank you.
Seven, zero.
Thanks, Rick.
I failed it about two, three weeks ago, and my craniol looked like that. Yeah, it's gonna be a little more, too, it's, I just wore it.
Yeah, right. And now, next month is when we meet on that Tuesday.
Yeah, the second, the second Tuesday.
The second Tuesday.
June, it's June sixth, we meet on June sixth.
Let me make sure. That's our regular meeting, June sixth?
Yes, that's what I did, I, I had a ladder, and then I made up, and getting my, to make sure the auction company knows, helping a guy on, and it broke, yes. How did it help, two, three weeks?
See ya.
Turned white as a ghost.